We believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. Our mission, the School District of Milton, in partnership with the community, prepares our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. Uh, pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I um, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion from Rick and second from Tracy. Any questions or comments on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A paling sign? Alright, I would entertain a motion in the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held, regular scheduled meeting held on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion from John, a second from uh, Rick. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A paling sign? Motion carries. Alright, we are on to vouchers.
I move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents, and six thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollar and eight cent void, as presented.
Second.
Motion from Tracy, a second from John. Any questions or comments on vouchers? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A paling sign? Alright, motion carries. Can I just ask, I don't, you want to check, no one has signed up for public comment? Please verify that, please. Thank you, thank you, Chris. Alright, we are on to superintendent update, red hot highlights.
Yeah, with um, summer school, we gave an update on at the last board meeting, so there hasn't been as much action in the schools. But one of the things that I want to highlight is that our annual student registration started today. It runs until August tenth, so. And I know that first day of registration is always a busy day. So our, our staff here that work on that had a lot of calls and uh, we have, it's online registration, but we have people available both through our tech office and through our district office to help people that either don't have access to technology. They can come in and use technology here or at home schools, or if uh, they have questions on things. So uh, we encourage folks to get registered if they haven't yet. And also bus registration is also open now, so they do that with Go Right Way. And uh, otherwise, we are prepping for August. Um, ball, sports, and activities get rolling in August, and that'll be coming up before you know it. One highlight next week is how we have some administrator training that we're doing next week. We'll give an update on uh, the details on that and how that went at our next meeting.
Rich, I'd like to um, thank the high school, the tech department, Jeremy and the staff there, um, the clear instructions that were given for student pickup. My student was able to accomplish picking up without any parental support. So, great job. Thank you guys, you're working so hard on that.
We have laptop pickup at the high school. And I guess we also have the um, orientation session for ninth graders today. Jeremy showed that there were a hundred and fifty incoming ninth graders that took part in that. It's a great way for them to be ready for the start of the school year.
Any other questions? Alright, for your up to preliminary twenty-five, twenty-six enrollment.
Yeah, the Chelsea will put the data on the board, but I'll kind of walk through it. Um, I really want to emphasize, and you probably saw that I really wanted to emphasize when you looked at it, that this is preliminary data. As I shared, today was the first day of, of registration. So this is our enrollment as of Thursday of last week, and literally as of eleven-thirty AM of, at last week, because later in the day on Thursday had changed, and Friday had changed, and today had changed. Uh, there are always families that haven't registered yet, and either new to the district, or they, this is their first child that's going to be starting 4K, or kindergarten, and they haven't registered them yet. And they're also typically our families that move out of the district during the summer, and they don't typically, or sometimes they don't let us know, and we don't find out until they register in another district, and then that district contacts us for record. So uh, these numbers will change between now and the start of the year, and our enrollment is official on the third Friday in September with that third Friday count. In that table on the left, though, you can see by each grade level uh, what our enrollment was as of Thursday. Uh, you can see um, the pre-K, our special ed students. We have eighteen special ed pre-K, and then 4K, under fifty-one, and then kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. In that next column of that table, it's split up by group. Kindergarten through third grade, we have a thousand eighty-seven students. Uh, for fifth and sixth at Northside, seven hundred eighty-one that are registered. Uh, grades seven and eight, five hundred thirty-six, and a thousand fifty-nine at the high school. And then uh, because we have multiple elementary schools, I broke that up by enrollment at each grade level at each of our four elementary schools. You can see that on the table on the right side. And again, that goes from, excuse me, from pre-K uh, through 4K kindergarten, grades one, two, and three. Uh, you can see that kindergarten is our largest class of that group, and are typically, as students move through the system, we gain uh, students at, at different grade levels. So if you remember last year, our 4K class was our largest 4K class that we've ever had. So that, this is that same group of students rolling up to kindergarten and adding um, probably about forty-five students more than they had as a, as a 4K class, if, if that's the size of the class that we end up with this fall. Uh, you can see uh, for each of our four schools, how many students there are at each school. In the table underneath that, that's broken down by the average class size, both for each school and each grade level. Uh, at the bottom of each column, it's the average class size at that school. I didn't incorporate, use pre-K and 4K in those totals, uh, because 4K will still be gaining students uh, between now and the start of the school year. Wouldn't be really accurate to, to loop that into the overall average class size. And then on the right side, you can see that average class size for each grade, and the overall K-three total of twenty-one point nine. And then at Northside, as I have shared on the, on the first table we looked at, it has the number of each grade at Northside, and the total number at Northside, that you can see the average class size for grades four, five, and six, too. And uh, one more time, emphasize that these are preliminary numbers. Um, we know that they'll change almost on a daily basis between now and, and the first day of school, and then even after the first day of school, change some between then and the third Friday count. One other thing that I want to note, um, because of some housing growth, um, we know that we picked up some new students as, as there's been. Uh, some house, new houses going up around the district, and new apartment complexes going up around the district. And as those new places to live pop up, we're keeping an eye on which attendance area they're in, because we want to monitor the number of students in each of our attendance areas. We do that every year. As we looked at it, not only for this coming year, that'll be starting here in September, but also for twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, we don't anticipate any need to make any changes to our attendance areas. Um, definitely not for this coming year, or we would have gone through that process already, but even previewing the following year. We will move back to that in, in uh, this fall, once we have the overall enrollment numbers, and uh, and then maybe look back to it in early winter to see what those housing trends look like. But if we, if we are working at the need to make any changes to our attendance areas, we would be uh, going through that process in plenty of time to be able to message that out to families and kind of talk through the impact that any potential changes would have. So that's at least two years down the road.
Questions? Comments?
I don't have a question, I just want to say thanks for putting that together. That's pretty helpful to get an idea of kind of where we're at, so, thank you.
I have a question before we leave that subject. Rich, um, those numbers at Northside concern me. At, at what point do we add a section? Twenty-seven is a lot of kids.
Twenty-seven is big. We were in that range at Northside, we have been for a couple of years. Um, in that twenty-five to twenty-seven range. Um, it's a lot of students in our class, but our, our teachers are, are strong teachers, and, and they can address that. But I'm comfortable with that number of sections and that number of uh, class, students in a class that is coming here. But it's always something that we'll take a look at.
How many sections of six grade are there?
Sixth grade?
Yeah, sixth, well, and is that the same for fifth?
Ten, and then fourth grade is nine.
If people at home couldn't hear that, we have nine sections in fourth grade, and then ten in both fifth and sixth.
I echo Joe's concern, I saw that number, and it does seem to be pretty high.
We'll look at it, as we go through registration, we'll take a look at how that number is doing. I think one of the things that we've done in the past is we, rather than adding another classroom, we've provided some map and reading support, so that for students, map and reading classes, they can have smaller numbers. So that's something that we'll take a look at.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you so much, I am now really curious to see what it looks like when school starts. Alright, we are on to the Human Resource Committee report.
Thanks for that. The HR committee met last week on July twenty-third. First item on the agenda is an update on twenty-five, twenty-six staffing. On April twenty-first, administration chaired the HR committee the need to add additional kindergarten teacher at Harmony due to the kindergarten enrollment. As the summer has progressed, the Department of Student Services has identified the need to add two special ed aides, one at East and one at West, due to two new students attending for the upcoming school year. Department of Teaching and Learning has proposed an increase in the advanced learning teacher, formerly known as gifted and talented position from a zero-point-eight FTE to one-point-zero FTE for the upcoming school year due to staffing challenges and changing instructional needs across the district. This position will continue to work on zero-point-eight FTE at Northside, and zero-point-two FTE at the elementary level. Any questions about that topic? Next up is review of proposed additions and changes to the employee handbook for twenty-five, twenty-six. HR committee has been continuing our handbook conversation um, that started at our June seventeenth meeting. The attached packet includes the pages of the employee handbook that the HR department is proposing changes to. I would encourage all board members to read through the proposed changes and contact Chris or Rich if you have any questions. Um, next steps will be to bring um, this handbook for final board review and possible approval at our meeting on August eleventh. Did anybody have any questions on any of those this time?
So um, one, so little two, in the board docs, there were two attachments, should there only have been one?
Yeah, I saw that now.
I wasn't sure if there was something else, I looked, it looked exactly the same when I reviewed them. Okay, um, the other question, just clarification on the section related to the PTO management, that would be in line with what was changed for the current year?
That is correct, we had those conversations in spring of this year, and that now is translating into the handbook update to final board action. What else, Rich?
Thank you.
Great, uh, to confirm, MEA voice given a copy of this? Or Rich?
Yes, they were, John. I met with Sarah Bracko, the MEA president, and we had conversations regarding that uh, last week. And then uh, I shared after the HR committee meeting, and also we shared our update based on our conversation there, with some additional changes that the committee was aware of at the end of the handbook. So yes, they're aware of all of the, everything you're at.
Any issues that they have, any of the changes to report?
Sarah has now reached out to me and all regarding those, our conversation or the following year. Thank you.
And just to be clear, it's in board docs now, to, right, anybody, right, as they should.
And maybe this is a, a different time, different place, different conversation. But Chris may speak to the why on one oh six. Looks like we changed the equity inclusion and we reworded it. And I'm not being critical, I just want to understand.
So that is what um, the districts, we work with an attorney at USI, and they help us with our handbook every, every summertime. And so they suggested those changes. In addition, we shared that with Shayna Lewis, and Shayna proposed those changes as well. So both legal councils vetted through the handbook language um, based on the, some of the information that had been shared from the administration, the president's office this year, and so that's the response to that.
I just want to restate that as I hear it, that as a response to what's coming from the White House, we are giving legal advice on how to do this the best way.
That is correct.
It's not a, it's not a, that's really something that we are against. Is that a fair statement?
It's, I, I can, I know it's a subject, I'm trying to, I'd rather be delicate. Go ahead. Um, it's not in any way, a move away from our goal of providing a high-quality education for all students. It's in our mission, it's in our vision, and it's something that's extremely important for us. Um, and uh, having a school district, the first school district is something that we value, both from our student standpoint and from our staff standpoint. And uh, having an equitable school district is something that we value.
Thank you, I, this is me speaking personally. Our words of inclusive and equitable mean a lot to me, and I appreciate you guys finding a way to work through this, so thank you for that. Me as a human being, I would say those words mean a lot to me, and I, I valued them before. I'm sorry that we had to find a way to get through all that. It's my opinion.
So um, on that note, I did read through one oh six, the proposed changes to it. So the core of what one oh six was, and the core of one oh six is now, is still the same.
Yes.
That we, we invite multicultural um, and different backgrounds to our school district to provide that opportunity to our students.
Agreed.
So um, because I, I've read through all the different changes that were in there, um, and I think it's fair for the handbook, based on what's there. It still has the same meaning behind it. Okay. I have one other question, and that, and a different one.
Hold one second, anything else on that topic?
Thank you. Um, the section, the civil air patrol and the volunteer firefighter, are those changes again from an attorney? I was just curious, because I actually had never seen civil air patrol in a leave, so was that something that, I'm curious what drove the changes there?
That, you are correct, that is from each turn from USI, they suggested updating our handbook to reflect those changes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, the last topic is discussion on twenty-five, twenty-six superintendent evaluation process. Committee had a discussion regarding our current superintendent evaluation process, the possibility of making a change away from our current process. Chris has reached out to the Badger Conference districts to see what they are using for their evaluations. The committee will be looking at these forms, comparing them to the form that we are currently using, and report back to the board about a process to use in the future. We hope to have this done in time for the evaluation later this year. If any board members have any comments, concerns, or question about this, please contact me. So stay tuned for more information on this topic there. Any questions about that? Okay, that's all I have, Ed.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Uh, Government's Committee report, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Um, last Tuesday, July twenty-second, the Government's Committee met. All of the committee members, the president, Tracy, Rick, and myself, and John will also join us, so thanks everybody for being in attendance. Uh, we had three agenda items, we'll kind of work through these. I want to say none of these are action items tonight, these are informative items, so we might, if we keep talking about them, just remember there's no action, just discussion. Uh, there were a first read, or there was a first read, of forty-two different policies, which you can see the names of in uh, Chelsea has put those out for us in board docs. Thirty of those were your basic routine that we've been through several times, where we, where the administration goes through and we use the policies, updates them based on what's needed, and a lot of times it's just worth spending one or two words or a sentence, or taking a Neola recommendation. So I would ask everyone to kind of take their, take a moment, read through those if they have kind of like just basic, normal maintenance and wear and tear there, care for our policies. There were five policies that are being recommended for being rescinded. Those, everything in those still exists, they just now live in a different part of our policies. So again, it's not that they're going away, or someone's setting that particular policy, it's just being reallocated to a different, different area. And then there were some new policies that I would invite everyone to, please take time to review those. And I'd like to shine a light on two of those new policies. Um, but before I do, I want to pause and see if anybody has any comments or questions on the other ones that were just mentioned.
So Chelsea, thank you for highlighting the new, I know you had to go back through those. Um, I, I echo Ed, um, the, thanks to the admin, there was, there was a lot of time spent going through each one of those forty-two policies. Um, a lot of good information in there, so I think Rich had to present any questions that I wanted to highlight to you.
Yeah, the two that I want to call out, um, one is a new, new policy being brought forward by administration, seven-five-four-seven, uh, around electronic communication between staff and students. If there's any questions, certainly feel free to throw them out there now, but I would encourage all board members to just be aware of that policy and read it, and have knowledge of it, I, I personally think it's a good thing, but also may raise some questions, so that you're prepared, please take time to understand that one. And then secondly, there is a new one, and I'm going to ask Rich to, another new one that I'm going to ask Rich to speak to a little bit, because there's a small change, especially in the numbering. And that's a resolution around workplace concerns, and we do have a process for that, but it's really geared more to um, termination and wrongfulness in the workplace. This policy would allow staff the ability to have a process when they want to work through a problem. So they're upset about something, and there's a, there's a communication hierarchy that they would go through, basically in a summary, they would go to their supervisor, they would go to Rich, when all those things fail, they would come to us. And it's just kind of, it's something we've had in place, and it's on us putting it and writing. So Rich, you didn't want to add to that?
Yeah, as Ed shared, it's, it's on the list that's in board docs, it's policies thirty-three-twenty and forty-three-twenty. And for folks who aren't as familiar with our policies, the three thousands are for policies that relate to our professional staff, which are teachers and administrators and their assistants. And the four thousands are policies that, that relate to our support staff, which are everyone who doesn't fall into that first group. Um, what Ed referred to is that we are going to be changing those policy numbers. This is not a Neola policy, it's something that we crafted with some input from Neola and from our legal counsel. But rather than having two separate policies that say the same thing for both groups of staff, when we bring that back for second read, it'll just be one policy, and it'll be in the eight thousands. But the lan, the only language change will, whether it refers to professional staff in one, and it refers to support staff in the other, it will refer to all staff under that same policy. And, and as Ed shared, it's providing some clarity for staff if they have a concern. It highlights the importance of bringing that concern informally to the person that you have, person or people that you have a concern with. Our goal is always to have our staff work through any concerns that they have in an informal manner, but if it isn't resolved in an informal manner, it lays out um, some specific steps on how to bring it through the change, to the change man.
So before I get on to item two, is there any questions on the policies that have been brought forth today?
And just a quick one here, where is the language easiest to find for anything that's moving?
Um, it is.
If I go to policies in board docs, do they be active or dry?
If you go back to the, to the agenda, and look the, let's see, the posture here, it looks like this.
Yeah, my cursor, whoops. And you can move past me, I can figure that out later, I'm sorry.
But it does, she had color quoted it by yellow, blue, and gray.
Understood.
I don't think that's a hyperlink to the actual policy.
No, you, yeah, I thought not draft, the draft folder, you'll find it. But I didn't find them in the draft section, so maybe I'm not looking in the right place.
There's an email that Chelsea sent out that has the, thanks for all of those.
Then I would probably need to do that, Mike, sorry.
We could send it tomorrow. I had to ask for it to be sent to me again. And I'm not alone in losing it.
And if, if you're reading through them, there are questions more than directed to you?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Alright, I will move us on to item two. This is about, um, this is about how we want to handle as a board. And I want to lay this out for food for thought. Items two and items three, we used almost all type of policy, and we had about ten minutes of conversation on these two items. So I don't want to dive too deep, but I want to introduce this concept for everyone. Um, as you may or may not be aware, when we go to the WAS conference every year in January, we have a delegate, it was Rick, currently it's myself, and they attend a delegation when they discuss resolutions. These resolutions are basically our form of advocacy, so that we can tell WAS we are for this or against them. And my ask of the board is, what is our position on that process? We can do nothing and just be aware of what's happening, what's being voted on in that meeting, and I can report back. We can review all of those recisions and have a position, say we agree with this, and Milton School District would be in favor, we can argue for it or against it. Or um, or we can go even further, if we kind of really get into it, we can actually suggest um, resolutions. So what I put forward for you to review in board docs is just a simple screenshot of the timeline of how it happens every year, and then a sample of some resolutions from last year, so you can see and digest um, what you want to, how you feel about it. And what I would ask is at a later date, if we could have some conversation about how we feel as a board about it, because it does, it will require some time to work on it. It's not something that unfortunately we can do quickly. The timing is unfortunately, in my opinion, bad, it comes out like late November or so, Christmas time. And we've only got a few weeks to get together during Christmas and figure out what you're in favor of, what you're not in favor of. But I also think it's important that we have, we take our stand, so we're not standing on the sidelines and saying, we would have never voted on that if, if we would have known we could have taken action, we are against that or for it. So I would just ask that people take some time and ponder that, and we'll bring that up and up for a deeper discussion, I'm going to do. Any questions on that?
I don't have a question, but I just want to be really, really clear to the public and to people in the world. The uh, resolutions that are in there are an example from last year. They are not this year's resolutions, I don't want there to be any confusion. We don't know what this year's resolutions will be, we haven't seen them. This is, if you look at February fifth of twenty twenty-five, so this is last year's document. Kind of like Rich's preliminary, this is not, we don't know what this will look like.
And just to back it up, I've provided those for the rest of the board as examples only.
Right.
And those are available, you have to sign with the WAS. Okay, item three, review of strategic plans. There was some discussion on, as you all know, our strategic plan is our anchor, is the foundation of everything, decision that we make should run back to strategic plan, and we'll actually see that come up later tonight in the data, data meeting. Um, there was a discussion about review of, of the strategic plan, and if any effort needs to be made to adjust it. There was some brief discussion about possibly some goals that might need some adjusting, because they have been achieved. Uh, we left the meeting with the decision that administration would take a first read and come back and make suggestions about how we should proceed from there on up. And that's really the strength of God, Rich, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, um, if the board has a desire to take down a, a full-scale strategic planning process and revisit our vision and mission and our strategic objectives, or our five pillars, as we refer to them, that is definitely something that, that we could do. Uh, it would be, it would be the just planning on when we would take that on. Uh, but at the very least, um, some of the goals are, as Ed shared, items that haven't achieved. This, these goals were adopted in twenty twenty-two, and some of them have had deadlines that have passed, and they've been achieved. Uh, so I, at the very least, I would recommend um, looking at updating our goals and focus areas under each of the five pillars.
And I believe, Rich, my impression is we left is that administration would come back with a first suggestion, those adjusted goals.
Yes.
And we will review them there.
Questions? Any questions?
Any other questions? That's all I have.
I would just say, let's not blow it up, it's a very, very good strategic plan, and it needs a little tweaking. I have referenced it often when I've spoken to other folks in other parts of the education world, other districts, other boards. And I felt like ours was really good, and I suggested that if they did not have one like that, that that's, that's the base that they needed to start from. So it's been a very good process for us, so let's, certainly don't need to blow it up, let's tweak it a little bit.
I do have just a governance question, then. So I previously chaired the Strategic Plan Committee, and so now that it's, I guess I'm assuming all of a sudden it's going to fall under the governance committee, which I'm not a part of, so I guess that what was decided. So there is no strategic plan committee, so is that governance wise, did that all get under this new?
That's a very good question, I think you're calling that out, I am not sure about that.
Yes, when we did the reorganization committees, that was one of the reorganizations, was moving strategic planning under governance.
The governance umbrella for the governance committee includes what previously had been Policy Committee, Legislative Committee, and Strategic Plan. Now all fall under that governance umbrella.
I'd like to echo what Joe said, I think the pillars and the way it was established was really good. I, and maybe going into the next one, the dates are what give it away, as though they're passed, so August 23, August 24. And again, at that point, like, those were clapping the schools, but maybe they're more longer term. So something just to think about, when you put a hard date in there, then you have to remember to go back and look at that date again. But the pillars themselves, even the focus areas I read through, and they're still really solid. So it's that, those dates that I would just have to mention.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but obviously they had been adopted in 2022, but this group, or portions of this group, had never viewed it. So, I mean, I don't want the general public to think that it's a 2022, and we just put it on a shelf and not anything.
I think that's a really good point, we utilize it all the time. We have our admin meetings, we lead with people reading off the mission and vision statements. When we put together agenda items, we talk about which of our five pillars that agenda falls into. So it's very much a living ingredient.
And I think also to address Jen's comment, when we have achieved goals that are there, that definitely shows that it's been, it's been embedded in the practice of the district. Because if we had put it on a shelf and we weren't paying attention, we would never have achieved the goals. So that speaks to the strength of it and to the, to the work that's been done by the district.
And I just want to thank the administration for the work they're going to do, I appreciate it. And I think they're the right group of people to start this conversation, because they have the strategic plan. So if anybody knows where the tweaking is needed, it's probably them. So I appreciate you guys started the conversation and we look forward to what you come up with.
Anything else? So new business, and Joe hinted at this at our last board meeting. John and I attended the WAS Leadership Summit and were able to do some learning and spend some time with consultants. Joe was a presenter at the summit and sat on a panel and thought it would be nice if we could share a little bit of lessons learned, or things that we learned when we were there. Do you want to start, John?
Sure.
Okay.
I think it's good, anytime you can get away to one of these events, of course, it's hard, especially in the summer. But every time I go to the one in Milwaukee, one of the advantages are the people you meet, the other boardmates, other districts. So I think that was the highlight for me again, was having lunch with these people, people that I've never met, breakfast, breakout sessions. One of Joe's sessions, the second one, I couldn't do the first one, but he kind of gathered everybody. We got the tables and tried to brainstorm amongst, I don't know, eight or 10 per table, maybe, so. Lot of different takeaways. Every, it seems like every district out there has, not issues, but they have questions about their agenda or their policies. They didn't know how to answer it, so everybody's kind of bouncing ideas off each other. A lot of connections were made, email addresses and that type of stuff. When it came to the breakout sessions, the difference between this one and Milwaukee one was, we had two choices. In Milwaukee, we had like 15 or so, so this was a much smaller setting. If I can read my handwriting here, some of the highlights that I took away. First one I did was district communication, Kerry does a good job with this, but I did take some good notes. It was centered around creative ways to meet our stakeholders where they are, just finding different ways to do that. We're creating ways to be more transparent and genuine. Next session was a section on social media and social media management. Seemed like a big buzzword over the two days was cell phone policy, and I think we kind of touched on that at some point here lately. But I think, and maybe somebody can correct me, but I think there's four states that have gone with statewide policy. There's maybe 20 other ones that have like optional suggestions for cell phone policies within the school districts. There's just a lot of ideas around, you know, how to mitigate the cell phone use, things for the kids to do. Strategic plan was a part of one of the sessions, and I think, I agree, as we just discussed, we have a pretty solid strategic plan, I was part of it a few years ago, and I know the admins look at it. One of the points that they made, if you are creating one, you know, don't make it a school board strategic plan, but make it a community strategic plan. So if anything we ever do to add or change, we might want to consider some community feedback to our strategic plan to make it more ownership on the community. That was the highlights that I had.
And I would say, one of the things that I liked about this summit was that it had two strands, right? There was one that was more of a general strand, and one that was for school board presidents. And so it was, it allowed for that relationship building and getting, connecting with people. There was also a lot of talk, it's, the opening session was all on the budget. I think it passed the day or two days before the event. And so that kind of permeated the whole event, and that was the first couple hours. I also attended all of the school board president strand, and so board relations, community relations with the board, communication. I attended the panel, you know, now you're board president, what you do. And so it was really helpful as a new president to have some of that opportunity to ask for questions and learn with people who were very experienced board presidents and liked being new in the role. We have a board development session coming up, and John and I were able to take some time to meet with a consultant that we will be working with, and that was also, I think, time well spent. And so I would just say that when those opportunities come up to do learning with like roles and responsibilities, I appreciate that we are able to do that and have that available in our state. Any questions? Oh, I was, Joe, did you have, Tracy, I'll come back to you, Joe, did you have any other?
No, no, you captured it really well. On a personal level, I have opened a can of worms that I didn't anticipate because I have been asked a number of times since then if I could continue facilitating and presenting and whatnot. I think I'm going to do something again in Milwaukee in January, the way it sounds, and I didn't anticipate quite so much demand. But we'll, we'll do what we can, but no, it's just, it is, the collaboration piece was what I really started with a couple of years ago, from the board president angle, and launched it a little bit in Milwaukee. This was a bit of a follow-up to that, and most of the feedback I got, zeroed in on that. Folks really appreciated to sit down, and you don't have to be a board president, you can sit down as a board member and just dialogue with someone from a different community, a different district. How do you do this? How do you do that? What's your challenge? What's your successes? And I think, you know, we saw lots of that, and everybody said, oh, we need to do more of this. And full disclosure, it's really hard for this group to do that with the open meetings constraints that we've got. And that's not good or bad, that just is what it is. However, two folks from a district can meet with two folks from a different district and not necessarily circumvent that, but be able to have a dialogue without, you know, thinking ahead of time. What's the agenda? How do we notice it, et cetera? So lots of folks think that there's some value in that, so hopefully we can continue to, all of us can share, right? Because like, some of my messaging was like, I don't have all the answers, but a room full of board presidents does. And that's the impetus for just get together and talk, so.
Tracy. John, you mentioned that you went, the first session you went to was on meeting the community where they are.
Correct.
What did they say? Did you have any notice on that? Just out of curiosity?
Yeah, so some of the ideas were, and I took the idea, then I kind of made it ours, like, have lunch at the gathering place. And Rich probably does that, you know, especially when we're in meetings, whatever. But why couldn't a couple of board members go have lunch with seniors at the gathering place, you know, to share ideas? The different Facebook messaging, where, you know, things run through Rich or the board president, just a way to get facts out there, things that are upcoming. And maybe, you know, collectively as a board, we all have a school that we're assigned to, we could get reports from the school and kind of share some highlights or, you know, some of the good things that the schools are doing. So it's really about information transparency, just let everybody know about it. The other one that I liked, and I'm glad you asked this, was the Homecoming Parade. Said the board members walking the Homecoming Parade.
Yeah, there was one school this week that had a float in their Homecoming Parade every year, and it was the theme was.
I mean, I'll drive the float, you guys can walk.
We come up with the theme?
Yes, I think it, thanks.
It's just about ideas like that, Tracy, that were pretty good.
I have a wagon, but my float decorating skills are minimal.
Any other questions? All right, we are on to Staffing Report, 6A.
I'll move to approve the staffing report and ask for some.
Second.
A motion from Tracy, a second for Rick, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Meeting dates.
We have some upcoming meetings and also some back-to-school events that board members are invited to that we also post, because there's a possible reform of a board there. Next week, Wednesday, on August 6th, we have a Finance Committee meeting. Again, it's Finance Committee on Wednesday, August 6th, at 6:30 PM. We have Milton High School Student Council Breakfast on Thursday, August 7th, that's Thursday next week at 7:30 AM at the high school. Our next regular board meeting is on Monday, August 11th. And then our other August meeting is on Monday, August 25th, both of those are at 6:30 PM. We have a New Teacher Breakfast on Monday, August 18th, at 8 AM. That also is at Milton High School. We have, Milton High School is hosting our Welcome Back Convocation for all staff on Wednesday, August 20th. That's at 7, that starts at 7:45 AM. And we have the Board Development Sessions also on Wednesday, August 20th, that'll be at 6:30 PM. And then I also want to remind folks that at that second regular board meeting in August, August 25th, we'll follow up the regular board meeting with our annual meeting, to follow the regular meeting. And tonight, to follow this meeting, we have a data workshop with our principals and directors. We're going to be sharing information about some of our data from last year.
Rich, can you, the Student Council Breakfast, can you just elaborate a little more on what that is?
Kevin, do you want to say that? So with the reorganization, the Student Council last year, they're much more accurate. One of the ideas that the students had this last year was to talk with you guys, but show them what Student Council did last year, what some of their goals are this year, and just try to engage more. So it's, it's not going to be a lot, then if you're going to have breakfast, to share what they're doing, and chance fingers and leaders are most successful.
Okay, so it's a meeting of them and the board, we're just not coming, like, coming and watching them interact, but that's what I was.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
One other thing that I would add, there were any other questions, is the Student Council Breakfast, the New Teacher Breakfast, and the Welcome Back Convocation are all open to any board members to attend. But we also know that there sometimes are other commitments that make it impossible to get there. So they're available for board members to attend without an expectation that the full board will be there.
And I would just, I would be out of town on August 11th, and John will be chairing the meeting. So if anybody has any questions or things they want to be sure are on the agenda, he and I are going to sit down next week before I leave for vacation, but then you'll be picking on that. Great, I would entertain more from you, Joe.
I'm with you, Joe.
More so from Tracy.
I'll second you.
Second to Rick, any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries. Just a reminder, we want to make sure Kerry gets a picture.
We'll also be rearranging the tables for the.